You've reached the Government Center Conference Bridge. Please enter the six-digit PIN code.
I'm not answering that question. I might answer my question, but if you want to get any... It's probably standing here. Um... Okay. Okay. So... Oh my... So... Don't...
I'm looking... I'm trying to help. Sorry. Absolutely. Somebody's getting...
You're up. The one... Yeah.
Uh... Right?
And then it's fine. You don't... That's... I'm trying to figure out... Yeah. Oh! They don't have to mark the lines. So this is basically just... Can you see him? It's... That's exactly... Okay. Okay. That... What... Yeah. I can hear him. So I can get that. Stop! Here. I need to stop this thing right now. Okay. Fine. If you want to dance, keep them silent. If you... You just do whatever... It's good for you. (laughing) So I... I'll send him something. Question one, please. This is...
Hi, this is Sarah. I can hear someone faintly. I can hear you now. Sounds good. I'll have you unmute.
...
Call the meeting to order. First item up is electronic participation. Board member meeting participation through electronic communication. Section 2.2-3708.1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended, permits members of the Board of Supervisors to participate in a meeting of the Board through electronic communication means from a remote location in certain situations. Vice Chair Sarah Bone has requested to participate remotely in the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors meeting scheduled for Monday, November 23rd, 2020, at 7:15 PM, to be physically held at the Government Center, Christiansburg, Virginia. The reason for the request is Vice Chair Bone will be traveling out of town for the Thanksgiving holiday. Do we have to have a motion for that also?
Sam, move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. Sarah, are you with us? Can you hear us?
I am, but I cannot hear Vicky.
You're muted.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go.
You should be able to hear.
Testing.
Okay, very good. All right, our next item is invocation and pledge, and we will lean on our county administrator for that.
Sir, Mr. Chair, and members, if we could rise for a moment of silence, and then I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Next item is presentations, recognitions, and awards, and the first one is Eagle Scout Project Dropbox for Retired United States Flags.
Good evening, Mr. Fidjikowski, members of the Board, and citizens of Montgomery County. My name is Jeremiah Garrettson. I attend Christiansburg High School as a ninth grader. I'm a resident of Christiansburg and a member of Boy Scout Troop 141. I am pleased to present a new United States Flag Retirement Center to be located in the lobby of Montgomery County Government Center. I chose this project because my family is very patriotic with a lot of prior and current service members, and I believe the United States flag deserves respect at all times, from the first time it's flown to the time that it can no longer be displayed respectfully. The project would not be possible without the help of others, and I'd really like to give a big thank you to the Montgomery County Government Center, the Circuit Clerk's Office, the Marine Corps League, Original Frameworks, Home Depot, Standout Stickers, and my friends and family. I really hope that this will be a useful addition to the Government Center for many years to come. Thank you all for your time and this opportunity.
Thank you, Jeremiah, and I don't know if you all have had an opportunity to see the box, but it's very nice. It's much nicer than the metal stamped out one that we had, and will hold a lot more flags, which I think I learned tonight, we get quite a few, a lot more than what I thought, that's for sure, so we thank you very much. Next presentation is recognition of Bill Ellenbogen. Okay. I don't think you want all of us to come down there, but I'll come down.
You can wave to me if you want, I don't.
Well, I ought to at least hand that to you.
Oh, thank you. In this day and age, things have changed.
Yes, they have.
Now, I don't know if we read this or not, I don't know if it's typical, but.
You read it.
If we do, then I'll need those special things for my head. Montgomery, Virginia. 2020, at 7:00 PM, in the Board Changers, Montgomery County Government Center, 755 Roanoke Street, Christiansburg, Virginia. Resolution of appreciation, Bill Ellenbogen. Whereas Bill Ellenbogen has served Montgomery County for many decades in various capacities, including a prominent business owner, residential and commercial developer, past president for the Montgomery Chamber of Commerce, and community leader, and whereas Bill Ellenbogen founded and served as President of the Friends of the Huckleberry since its inception in 1990, promoting a vision for a Rails to Trails project as the Huckleberry Trail, connecting Christiansburg, Blacksburg, and the Jefferson National Forest, and whereas after three decades, a one-mile nature trail is now a trail system with over 14 miles connecting the towns of Blacksburg and Christiansburg to each other in the Jefferson National Forest, and whereas after 30 years serving as the President of the Friends of the Huckleberry, Bill Ellenbogen has decided to retire from the role of President, and whereas these years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the community, he has worked constantly for the betterment of the community, and whereas Bill Ellenbogen was presented the New River Valley Regional Commission's Citizen of the Valley Award in August 2020 for his steadfast work on behalf of the New River Valley and unwavering efforts with respect to the development of the Huckleberry Trail, and whereas the members of this body recognize that Bill Ellenbogen's years of dedicated service has contributed to the growth and development of the community, and has earned the admiration and high regard of his peers. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, that Board of Supervisors on behalf of the entire citizenship hereby extends sincere appreciation and thanks to Bill Ellenbogen for his distinguished service to the community and highly commend him for the manner in which he has carried out his duties and responsibilities. Be it further resolved that the original of this resolution be presented to Bill Ellenbogen as a testimonial of the high esteem and appreciation in which he is regarded by the Board of Supervisors, and that a copy be a part of the official minutes of Montgomery County. That's a mouthful.
Well, thank you very much.
I'm hoping you're not just going to ride off into the sunset, because we still got another trail we're trying to connect.
I am going to stay on the board of the Friends of the Huckleberry and continue to work for the community. I got a couple of remarks if I'm allowed to, but yes, I definitely plan to continue to serve the county.
Now, when we get ready for Valley to Valley Trails.
Yes, yes.
I'd like to learn more about it, I know the idea's been promoted, I have not heard all the details. Okay, sure, thanks.
Thank you to the Board of Supervisors and to Chairman Fidjikowski for reading that long tome. It's a little more than I expected, to be honest with you, but thank you very much. I want to express sincere thanks for acknowledging my efforts on behalf of the Huckleberry. It's really been a pleasure to serve the community and to be involved in this project for so many years. It's been a team effort. This project has started in about 1989. I got involved when Roger Hedgepath, the mayor of Blacksburg, they were doing an update on their master plan and needed to discuss commuting and recreational trails, both, and he asked if I'd get involved to see if maybe I could help expedite the community communication to see if we couldn't get this project moving forward. A mile of it was built in 1976, of which I had no involvement, that was done prior to my involvement, but it was strictly in Blacksburg. So we quickly identified a goal of trying to connect the two towns, Virginia Tech, the county, and of course eventually to the national forest, and it's worked out pretty well so far. I'd like to thank Roger, now Roger's obviously passed away now, but he was a very visionary guy, and I really am glad he got me involved. It's gone from being a one-mile trail to a true linear park with about a 15-mile network, almost 15 miles, connects important nodes in the community, Virginia Tech, the two towns, the national forest, Warm Hearth, and a bunch of other housing communities, and many commercial nodes as well, which I think is really neat, and I'm proud when I go out there and watch the different user groups, from parents with little kids to older people that are on walkers, which I may soon be on one myself, and bikers, and young people, and it's really a neat facility, and this year maybe some of its many uses came a little more to the fore, given the trials and tribulations that everybody's gone through. The team that I mentioned has included the Board of Supervisors. You guys have, over the years collectively, I'm speaking not just youth, people sitting here now, but the Board of Supervisors was very supportive. We had to get federal grants, we had to get local money involved, we had to get support of businesses, it's really been a great effort, and it truly has been a team. I get a lot of credit, and I'm appreciative that somebody recognized that, but I will tell you, it has been so many people involved in this over the years, it's been 30 years I've been involved, and I can't possibly list all the people, so I'm not even going to try, other than just acknowledge the communities that served to help get this done. Of course, as I mentioned, the Board of Supervisors, the two-town governments have been phenomenal to work with, and Virginia Tech's been great to work with. There have been private property owners that have given their land. I will mention Willie Price, and I'll mention Corning, and I'm going to mention New River Valley Mall, which, not New River Valley Mall anymore, but it was when I was working with them, and they gave private property, allowed people to cross their private property, and that's a stretch to go, and we never wanted to use that four-letter word that begins with C, condemnation, okay, and we never did, and that was a good thing, we never even threatened it, we never thought about using it for a recreational trail, it's not something that I would believe, and I'm a believer in private property rights, but that's another discussion for another time. Anyway, the team has also included the local recreational directors, and right now Mitchell Hoff, who serves the county, has done a great job working for you guys, he's so responsive when I need help, he gets right on it, if I call and say a tree's down, I hear through our website, somebody's out there, and sometimes within hours, getting the tree cut away, and the maintenance has been great and all of that. We have Dean Crane in the town of Blacksburg, and Brad Epple in Christiansburg that I've worked with recently, and there have been other ones prior to them, when you're there 30 years, you go through a few Board of Supervisors members, and a few Town Council members, and a few Recreation Directors as well. Local business leaders have stepped up and given financial support so that we could come to the governments with money in hand and say, hey, we've got the matching funds for the grants, and we did that a number of times, and I think that's been part of the success of the Huckleberry. We used a progressive mode of fundraising that allowed us to come and not say, hey, you give us all the money, we'll say, we'll give you some money if you can come forward with some money as well, and that's worked out well. After 30 years, I felt I was losing some energy as I've gotten older, and I also felt like it was time for some new ideas, so we've identified a very competent and talented young woman by the name of Beth Loman, and she works with the town of Blacksburg in a couple of different capacities, she works with the state of Virginia, she has a law degree, although she's not a practicing attorney, she's been involved, the president of New River Valley Bike Club, she serves on a number of committees within the town of Blacksburg and locally in the community, and I think she'll do a great job, she has new ideas, can bring new energy to the project, and I'm going to stay on the board, as I said earlier, and try and support her and give her some historical knowledge that maybe I have. I feel there's one physical, there's many things that could be done for the trail, can new connections and various things, but there's one last part of the project that I feel I've left a little undone. I've left a little undone, and that's the bridge over Prices Fork Road, a pedestrian bridge. Friends of the Huckleberry has $100,000 in retained funds earmarked for that. Unfortunately, it's probably going to be a $1.5 to $2 million project, similar to the Renvenols Bridge that goes over 114. It's going to be a significant step. It's very much needed. Crossing Prices Fork Road at grade is not safe, and it's an impediment to using, and the section out beyond Prices Fork Road is absolutely gorgeous. If you all ever get a chance to walk, or the citizens of the community haven't been on that section, it's gorgeous. There are a number of places to park out there that you don't have to ride the whole length. You could park at the Heritage Park, or there's a fire station out there and a couple other places, but it's a gorgeous section of the trail. It would be a wonderful thing to do on a nice, not-too-cold day. I think Blacksburg is committed to completing this link. They just have to find the funds. $2 million is a lot of money, and we understand that, and so we're hoping that some recreation grant or federal grant or something, V. dot grant or something will come along that eventually will allow that to be completed, to make a safe at-grade crossing of Prices Fork Road. The last person I'd like to thank is my wife Janet. You know, you go to a lot of meetings at night, just as you all do, and if you have spouses or significant others, they sacrifice a lot of your time. My wife, who is here, she's been very supportive. I appreciate it, so.
Thank you very much for listening to me, and thank you for presenting me with this wonderful plug.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And yes, we will have to get together and talk about our plans for the superhighway, Valley to Valley. As my lovely assistant finishes up cleaning, our next item is public address. Some guidelines, which we don't go over very often for public address, but now might be a good time to do it. The Board of Supervisors allows citizens to present comments on issues deserving their attention during public address at each meeting. If you wish to speak, please observe the policy below regarding public address and the presentation of visuals. First, a public address sign-up sheet will be available outside the meeting room, and we have three people that have signed up. Speakers are requested to provide their name, address, and phone number and list the subject matter on the sign-up sheet. Following the names on the sign-up sheet, other speakers will be allowed, so if you did not sign up on it, you can still speak. Each speaker has four minutes, whether speaking as an individual or a representative. All comments must be directed to the chair and other supervisors from the speaker's lectern at the front of the room. Please begin by stating your name and address. Debate between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers may leave any written statements and/or comments to the supervisors with the board clerk. Speakers will be judged out of order should the speaker engage in personal attacks, use profanity or abusive language, or debate with the audience and not address the supervisors. Accepted adequate is not to applaud or make loud responses. We need to read that more often, I'd say, but I don't think we have too many. Like I said, we have three people signed up. The first one is Mariah Bragg.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Mariah Bragg, and I live at 115 Hearthstone Drive in downtown Blacksburg. In my mind, there is only one reason to build a communications tower, and that's to provide better service to the surrounding residents. After going door-to-door, there were three people out of the 12 that we were able to speak to who said their internet was bad and they would like to do something about it, but none of them suggested building a Verizon cell tower. That is because to this problem, there are several potential solutions: fiber optic cables, satellite devices, existing competitors. One resident of Hillcrest told us that he has already signed up for Starlink, and as soon as it's available, "I'm moving over to it," that's a quote, "regardless of whether or not Verizon builds this tower." In Verizon's presentation, we didn't hear anything about these options, because if you're Verizon, this is the only option. Verizon is offering their solution as though it is the only one, framing opposition to it as a threat to the safety of residents and their ability to learn remotely, work from home, and get medical help. It does not make sense to begin and end with a single solution provided by a for-profit outside interest like Verizon without doing our due diligence. I caution the board to consider critically the notion of progress. Talk to your constituents. Hans, my partner, and I were only able to speak with a dozen of the people living around Union Valley Road, but what we learned challenged the assumption we formed in the last meeting, that Reiner is in sore need of more service, and this cell tower is the only answer. Over 75% of 911 calls are made on a wireless device. This was evidence presented by Verizon in the last meeting supporting the need for another cell tower. But this kind of reasoning is dangerous, because if you follow it to its conclusion, everywhere you go should have signal. As one resident told us, people move out to the country for peace, and as another resident described it, to get away from the rat race. The popularity of a thing does not justify its ubiquitous presence. However, it did concern us that people might be injured in the valley and be unable to call for help, so we drove down Union Valley Road and all around Nolly Road and Smith Creek to see when the signal dropped, but we were using Verizon, and we never lost signal, so I guess the tower isn't for those residents of Montgomery County. 67% of homebuyers value reliable wireless more than anything besides a good hospital. That's another statistic shared by Verizon, a statistic that came from a study conducted by CTIA, a trade association representing the wireless communication industry. Regardless, does the desire for connectivity justify the construction of a permanent cell tower when there are other options? To the 12 people, two of the 12 people we spoke to wanted better service, whether or not it meant building a tower. Of the rest, many worried about the additional radiation emitted by the tower. The more affluent expressed dismay that the beautiful view they had relocated for would be impacted. All expressed some degree of apathy, not about the tower, but about the consequence of their opposition. In the words of one resident, "We've learned that the county's going to do what the county's going to do." None of the people we spoke to were able to make it tonight, but it would be a mistake to assume that means they approve of this project. If you're wondering why you haven't heard from your constituents, it's because they believe their voices don't matter. In the words of one resident of the mobile home park, "No one cares about poor people." Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is going to be Zach Butler.
Hello. My name is Zach Butler. I live at 3159 Hillman Lane in Prices Fork, Montgomery County. Thank you for having me speak before you tonight. I was invited by them to come out here and educate myself on this opinion and on this subject and get involved with local government, something I've been wanting to do for a long time. You might be surprised to hear that I disagree with my two colleagues for four different reasons. First is I'm mostly libertarian, and I don't think we should even be having this discussion. When they first invited me to get involved in this, I thought that they were trying to build a cell tower on some, you know, national park or county land or something, but this is someone's farmland, and I don't think that Montgomery County should even have the right to tell them that they can't sell part of it to Verizon. Second, I have a degree in computer engineering and physics, and one in computer science, and I've also studied radio since 2008. I'm an extra class, I was an extra class licensed amateur radio operator for 10 years, and I can tell you that we've been bathed in these radio waves since the 1940s from radar systems and experimenters such as myself, and there is little evidence that these frequencies are harmful to citizens. These telecommunications companies, they put in 5/8 wavelength ground planes or quarter wavelength ground planes that direct the radiation away from the immediate area. You'll often find that your signal is weaker if you're standing under a tower than it is if you go farther away, because they direct the energy towards the horizon. I can also tell you that in science, like, we don't know everything. There's a lot that we don't know, so maybe there are some harmful effects we haven't discovered, but I'm not aware of them. Third is I think that, well, I am a customer of Verizon Wireless, and that is a bias I have in this situation, though I don't live where this tower would provide me service. Verizon Wireless is a shady company. I used to have an unlimited data plan. They took it from me without my consent. They put everyone on limited data plans for a long time. Then they brought it back, but with tethering, I mean, sorry, throttling, so it's not really unlimited, and you should be careful about doing business with them, because the fact is, even though I don't think we should be having this discussion, we are, and you have options. I think that you should negotiate, and that's your responsibility to the citizens of Montgomery County to negotiate. Are they offering plans for low-income citizens? Are they offering free plans for educational customers? Are they guaranteeing unlimited data for fixed-point broadband? I think we could get some of those things for the county, and I think that's your job. At a fourth point, it escapes me. I guess that was the fourth point, that you should negotiate. The third point was that they're shady. The fourth point is that you should negotiate for the citizens of your county if you're going to issue this permit. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up on the list is Hans Taylor.
My friends, there's something else. You surround yourself with great people. Dear Board of Supervisors, my name is Hans Taylor, and I live at 115 Hearthstone Drive
That's not us.
All right, okay. In Blacksburg, Virginia. Over this past weekend, my partner Mariah and I went out to the community surrounding the land of Verizon's proposed cellular tower. Going door-to-door, we asked three questions to everyone we spoke with. Were you aware of Verizon's proposal to build a 200-foot cellular tower? What is your current internet and phone service like? And what are your thoughts on this proposal? We began in the neighborhood directly across the street from the proposed site. For those of you who may not know, this is a low-income housing area. It's a mobile home park, and it's arguably, it's arguably one of the poorest parts of our community. Every single person we talked with here was unaware of this tower and received no notification from Verizon nor the county, and although Union Valley Road technically separates their homes from the land of Verizon's proposed tower, they are effectively adjacent to this land. After hearing Verizon's legal counsel give you all a presentation at the last meeting, I was left with the impression that there were people who were here that were in great need of home and mobile internet service. However, every one of them had home and mobile internet service, and all but one were satisfied with their internet. The one person who was not satisfied with their service ironically had Verizon, while all the others had Chantel. I think everyone in this neighborhood would appreciate if you all came to see what it's like for yourself before voting in favor of a proposal that argued that they needed it. We saw for ourselves that kids were virtually attending their schools just fine during the day and then were able to play their Xbox and Playstation, this is the words of these parents, in the evenings while their parents were able to stream their favorite shows. I would want to laugh at how absurd Verizon's claims were if not for the fact that no one here was notified of Verizon's business to build a 15-story-tall tower across the street from their home. All but one was opposed to this tower, and that one person told us that they were moving elsewhere and that they didn't care. Board of Supervisors, would any of you be supporting this proposal if this tower would be built next door to your family? To all those who are listening both here and at home, if you and your neighbors are in need of this tower, then by all means, give Verizon's lawyers a call and have them place this tower next door to you and your families. All that I ask is that you please not expect others elsewhere, especially the most impoverished, to bear the burden of your needs for better Wi-Fi. And to Supervisor King and to everyone else on the board, if there are people in your district in need of internet or even a better internet, I ask that you bring them and their neighbors to the table and come up with a plan together. No one should be excluded from the conversation, and no one should be treated unfairly. Board of Supervisors, I ask that you vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have anyone else signed up for public address, but if you would like to come forward and speak, you're welcome to, if you just give your name and address, and you will have four minutes. Seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to go ahead and close public address. Next item is addendum. Do we have any addendum?
No, sir. No addendum this evening.
All right, moving right along. Items of consent. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, if you'll call a roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blavens?
Aye.
Chair Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item under old business ordinance, special use permit, Selco partnership, Verizon Wireless telecommunications tower. Is there a motion?
I'd like to ask the question if I could. I've talked to several people. You want to get a motion first?
We probably should get a motion and a second before we discuss.
I need to put it on the floor for discussion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, put it on the floor for discussion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Thank you.
Let's discuss.
As you know, as I discussed, I live about a quarter mile from where this tower's going. I lived in the same area for over 30 years. Reiner's grew a lot. When I lived there, there was probably four houses all the way around. The rest of it was farmland. The people that I've discussed this with, majority of them says they don't care one way or another. The other ones say, well, maybe to help me with my cellphone. There is one gentleman that I've tried to get a hold of today, and he was working, and I was just wondering if it would be a problem if we waited till December to vote for this, I just tried to get a contact with him again, so I can at least talk to him. Because the way I do things, if something comes up and somebody has a problem with it, I do like to talk to them, even if it's just one person.
Any other comments?
Well, I can support Supervisor King because it's in his district, and I did think something interesting was raised tonight about, you know, asking for things. I guess I never thought about asking for things or things being offered in a while, and one of the things I was particularly interested in is do they do anything for students? I don't know, but I thought that was a good comment. I don't think we normally negotiate with them, do we? They just come in and...
No.
There's all the legal parts of that, too, you know, so... But how do we, if we want to support you Supervisor King, do we go about that with the motion on the floor?
If you remember, when Verizon was here, I asked them about a space for first responders, and they said they would have to buy their own. And I'm afraid, I mean, Marty, if I'm wrong, please correct me, if we try to negotiate with these people, that could be something like, you know, if you do this for us, we'll let you do this. I mean, that's not legal, right?
Right, and localities aren't involved
Right.
in what service they provide. That's the State Corporation Commission, I believe. I mean, Verizon is a public utility that's regulated by the state. I mean, we obviously could provide comments to the state, but we don't regulate that activity. I mean, what we regulate in this case is the land use for that tower to go there, and that authority is not unlimited. I mean, it's limited by federal law.
I mean, but we couldn't go to Verizon and say, if you do this, we'll... I mean, but we couldn't go to Verizon and say, if you do this, we'll approve the permit.
No.
That's not legal.
Unless it was some way related to the land use, like put up a screen or, you know, do something from a land use perspective to address an adverse impact. Other than that, no. No quid pro quo, I think, is what we're talking about.
Right, that's illegal.
Yes, frowned upon, right.
Frowned upon.
Any other comments?
I, of course, Supervisor King, support you in the request to reach out. I also, I think these folks bring up an interesting point, and we, I know I got an email, and probably it came to everybody, about notification of residents in rental units and whether or not they were notified. So I'd be interested, before we bring this back, just to find out if residents in rental units were notified or just landlords.
Did you get Emily Gibson's email?
I did not. Did it come today?
I did.
Emily, could you enlighten?
And what the state code requires is notification to property owners, and I'm not sure we have access to who's renting or not renting, other than if we do an inspection maybe of some sort, but, so you could probably address that.
So the state code section 2204 requires that we mail to adjacent property owners. We get that information through the Commissioner of Revenue's Office. And as I put in the email earlier today that came from a citizen, it's okay. We also, we exceed state code requirements with our own requirements in that we make everything readily available online, but we also post the site with a physical sign, and that's a sign per road frontage. So in this case, it's 126 acre site, it had access only from Union Valley, so there's a sign posted at that farm entrance to access the site. That sign just says zoning hearing, has our phone number prominently displayed, but offers that phone number and a QR code which would take you directly to the information. We post physically all of our sites, and we do find that increases the calls that we get, because letters go to only those who own property or live nearby, but we get lots of commuters, depending on what the route is, that'll call after they see this sign. So the site was also physically posted, and still is.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I apologize. I did not have a chance to check my, this email today, so...
Do you recall getting any calls from the signs?
So once the sign goes up, we usually do get several calls. Of the calls that we got, most just wanted to know what it was, and so once we told them, they were fine with that. We did get an email from a citizen that had questions about the specifics. We were able to direct them to the website to see the application, and then they had a separate conversation with the applicant's attorney about some specifics. He had some questions that were very specific, and she was able to help them.
Any other questions for Emily? Thank you. Any other comments?
I would like for Mr. King to be able to have an opportunity to talk to his constituent, so I support that.
Thank you. I think we have consensus on that. How would we kick the can to the next meeting? Marty, the same way?
Yeah, I think the same way with specific instructions on, like, will it be back December 14th? Is that our meeting?
December 14th.
Does that have to come in the form of a motion? And what about the original motion to discuss?
I think you can do a new motion in a second, and that would then take care of it.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'd like to do a motion to move this to a December 14th meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call a roll.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Frazekowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, next item up is new business, ACE program with the New River Community College memorandum of agreement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'm glad we're doing it.
Yes.
It's one of the favorite programs, I'm sure. Madam Secretary, if you'll call a roll.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair Frazekowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next up is appropriation for playground equipment at McCoy Park.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, is that going to the roundhouse?
I was going to talk about it first. Yeah, I've had several requests to, for playground equipment at the park in McCoy, and they have some, but it's like for smaller kids, and it's older, it's been there a while. When I spoke with the administrator, county administrator, he was, to my dismay, he was excited about it. I didn't think he would be.
No, that's something that's very much needed in what we're proposing. What we're proposing is a setup similar to what we have there at Mid-County Park at the Frog Pond area, and I do know the price tag always is a little bit eye-popping, but for public playground equipment, for all the safety features and everything that we have to install, that's pretty much what it costs.
And I spoke with the director of parks, too, and he explained that the mission was to try to keep all the park equipment similar throughout the county, and that was the reason for the large price, because it kind of scared me when he told me. But anyway, I'd appreciate support, and I'm sure all the citizens that live in McCoy would do in the area.
Any other comments?
Well, I would like to add that if you have a park without a playground, you don't have a park. I don't know what you have. I guess you could bring your horse down there and ride around on the field.
They have a softball field, and they have a walking track that's gravel, which is another...
So that'll be next year?
Maybe next year, yeah, we can get that.
Our Parks and Rec Director does not look excited about having horses at his park.
Oh, I thought he was happy with joy there. Yeah, I, you know, I think this board is definitely pro parks, and I think we've proved that by the Creed Field down in Shawsville and by the Future Park in Reiner. Do we even have a name for that one yet? King Park?
Future Park. We waiting on the shovel to come.
But, you know, I think we all see the benefit, especially in the COVID era, of letting our kids and adults and everybody get outside and get some fresh air. And I think it's very important that we support it, so if nobody else has anything to add, I'll call for the roll.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Ms. Blevins?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Frazekowski?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right, next item up is reports. County Attorney, always first.
Even though it's early in the evening, I will, I'll give the county administrator all of my time tonight.
That's very generous.
I'm sure he has a couple items.
Our county administrator, you are up.
I have two items.
That's a couple.
First off, I just want to mention to everyone that I heard from the superintendent this afternoon, the school board has also agreed to postpone the joint meeting that was, we talked about for next Monday with the Thanksgiving holiday season and just things in general right now with the pandemic. We felt it'd be better to delay that till later, so we will look at a date probably in January or February to reschedule that. So just wanted to make you aware of that. And the second thing I have is I hope everybody has a very safe and restful Thanksgiving. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. All right, supervisors, I'll go down the list, starting with Supervisor King.
Just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, hope you enjoy yourself and your family. Put down your cellphones, enjoy your family, your kids, your spouses and all. I would just like to say one thing. I mean, you know, we was talking about trying to help our employees and all this, and when I say this, I would invite any supervisor, if they have a comment, to please share it. When we done what we done for our employees, I thought it was a wonderful thing. And in the media, when we transferred the $500,000 to the school side for their employees and stuff, people need to understand this was not Carers money for the incentive pays or whatever you want to call it. It was to release some of the school's operating budget money so they could use it for their employees. I know I had a few people, you know, ask me about, you know, why y'all use Carer money? How y'all do that? That's not the way it was in the media. I'll just leave it at that. And I think this board has worked hard to help the school system with their incentive pays, what I call it, you may call it a stipends or whatever, but I do appreciate this board for voting that way. Every employee, I've said up here and said it on many occasions, our employees are the best asset we have, this side and the school side. We can build billion-dollar buildings, it ain't going to do a bit of good unless you have the people in them that care for what they do. And I also want to say this in closing, I do appreciate everybody that works for the school system, county side, the sheriff's side, y'all do a wonderful job, and we're lucky, these seven people sitting up here, well, and Sarah on the phone, are the luckiest people in Montgomery County, because we get to be part of everybody. And I do appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Biggs.
Too bad that's not a motion, I'd second it. Great job, Supervisor King, I agree with you with everything you said. I was just wanting to wish everyone a safe Thanksgiving. I guess I'm a little concerned about Thanksgiving, and I know that it's really hard on folks to not be able to travel and see parents or... I know what's left of my family is out West, so that's been a no-no. But I want to thank everyone, school side, county, doesn't matter. Our employees are an investment, and, you know, without the employees, you know, we don't have anything else. So just everyone try to be safe, as safe as you can.
Thank you. Supervisor Demots.
I don't want to belabor the point, because I think it's already been made and very well made by Supervisors King and Biggs, so I'll just say that I agree with both of them. Other than that, I have no report.
Okay, dang. Well, thank you. Supervisor Shepherd.
I agree with Supervisor King and Supervisor Biggs. It's just a misprint, I hope. On another note, relating to Thanksgiving, I had an episode or an issue happen to me this morning while I was driving a bus, a bus route. There was a gentleman got behind me, and his gestures were borderline road rage. And I just want people to keep in mind, take responsibility for your actions, not what happens to you, because I did nothing to this guy, and he felt necessary to show me some hand gestures, which I saw through the mirror, because he was making a turn. But anyway, just be kind to each other and have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Supervisor Blevins.
Again, I agree with Supervisor King and Ms. Biggs, Supervisor Biggs. We do have great staff, employees, and we should always invest in our employees, and we are blessed, I'm very blessed to live in Montgomery County where we put people first. And want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, stay safe out there, and also want to say November is National Adoption Month, and our Montgomery County Department of Social Services came out with these and developed, I think it was an intern from their office department made these neat decals for adoption. And of course, adoption, people always think of young babies or infants, but we have kids that need to be adopted of all ages, and so that's why they went with the sneakers. And I think that was just a great way to promote and for adoption for this month, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bone.
I agree with Supervisors Biggs and King and Blevins. I'm grateful that Supervisor Blevins brought up Adoption Month. One of my sisters actually put her child, her newborn, up for adoption, and it wasn't until that child was about 25 years old that the child was reunited with our family, and it was quite a blessing, and that child had a wonderful upbringing. There's lots of great stories about adoption. And of course, I had a couple of cousins that were adopted also. I highly encourage adoption as an option, and I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thanks so much for letting me be part of the meeting remotely.
Thank you, Sarah. All right. Save the worst for last. I tell you, you know, this year has been tough on everybody, and I don't think anybody's ever going to argue that. As we're going into not just Thanksgiving, we're going into the holiday season, so this is something we're going to be dealing with as far as COVID-19, a very strange disease where over 99% of the people that catch it recover from it. It's amazing that it is causing such problems in our society. But we do have people that, you have some that think it's a big hoax. I don't know how they can find it to be a hoax when people are sick and some are dying from it, but it kind of goes back to Supervisor Shepherd's comment about you need to take responsibility for yourself. And what I'm going to ask everybody is just use some common sense. You know, something that our county administrator, when he gives out his updates for their, for county employees, he always throws this comment in there, and I appreciate it. It says, "Please note that the New River Health District defines an exposure to COVID-19 as follows: face-to-face contact with an infected person while standing closer than six feet and not wearing a mask for longer than 15 minutes." It's important that you remember that. So for those folks that choose not to wear a mask, stay away from people. You know, it's pretty simple, pretty easy. We have those in our society that are susceptible to this disease. Children, adults with underlying conditions can suffer terribly from it, and of course, the elderly also. So be that kind of a person that uses common sense and says, hey, you know, I was closer than six feet for 15 minutes or longer with somebody that I do not even know, then you should assume that they could have it. But what if you find out the next day that that person did have it? Then it's up to you to use common sense and quarantine yourself until you are able to either go and get tested, which I'm sure they don't want to do right away, they want, give that a few days, but you can contact the health department, get tested, before you go and give grandma a hug. It's just, it's just common sense. It was said today on TV, and I'm sorry, I can't remember who I'm referring to, but they basically said that, you know, when you see friends and relatives, you don't look at them as people that could be carrying a disease. You just don't. You look at them as people that you care for, and you just assume that they're fine. And I am speaking from experience, because you all know that I had it back last, this past May, April time period. I had absolutely no symptoms. And that's how it's going to get passed, and that's how it's going to spread during the holiday, because people are just going to assume without thinking, well, that person could be like Frazekowski. That person could be, somebody just has no symptoms. So you need to think about these things, especially before you expose friends and relatives, that's for sure, because you definitely don't want to see anything happen. We just found out today that a friend of ours lost her sister to this disease. It's just, you know, you don't know. You don't know who's next, so we need to just use com-
So we need to just use common sense measures. And the, our New River Valley Public Health Task Force has been incredibly good and we owe a lot to them. And their facts that they give out twice a week, or is it three times a week? Three times a week. They have, they have, this has come up several times. "We have community spread from travel, car pools and social gatherings. Practice good prevention strategies at home, work, school and play." It's common sense. You just got to get used to it. We have three vaccines that have been announced. So, you know, folks, I don't know about you, but I'm starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel. So I heard today that, you know, possibly by May, we may have herd immunity through vaccination. And so, that's good news. But there's also testing available to all the citizens in the county and they post that. And I know November 24th, which is tomorrow, they have drive-through testing at the health department here in Christiansburg. December 1st, they also have drive-through testing at the health department. And then on December the 3rd, they're going to have it at the New River Valley Mall. And this is drive-through, this is easy to do and it's free. So I urge citizens, instead of taking chances, I'm not a big mask wearer, I don't like wearing it, but, and I also forget sometimes, you'd be walking across the parking lot, not intending on speaking to anybody or even getting close to anybody, and wouldn't you know it, somebody recognizes you and walks up to you and wants to talk. Again, six feet, if you're face-to-face, no more than 15 minutes. Give your piece and move on out. That's, I think, the common sense thing to do. But I always try to carry one in my, one of these in my pocket, just in case something like that happens. But I think if we do these things, there'll be more of us having happy holidays for the rest of the year because we won't be getting sick. So that's what I'm hoping everybody will just think about that. It's not a hoax. There's people in your life you need to protect and so we need to do that. I also wanted to add one other thing, if I can remember what it was. I'm getting old too. I can understand that. At our New River Valley Regional Commission meeting, you know, we've got the NRV Business Continuity Team that was formed and they gave a little bit of a report. Nearly 8,500 jobs have been impacted. Hundreds of businesses have been provided information, 68 consultations, two consultations on-site, and they've already had three reimbursements for cleaning. Because if you have a business and you get a customer or employee that tested positive and you need to clean your facility and you just don't know where you're going to get the money or how to even go about it or what the legal ramifications are, the continuity team is there to help you. So please take advantage of it before all the money's gone. Definitely need to take advantage of that, it's a great service. And on that, I am also going to wish you all a great Thanksgiving. Don't eat too much turkey, you'll fall asleep at the TV. And with that, oh, go ahead Supervisor King?
I got one more thing and I do want to apologize to my friends in the small business. If you remember Friday is Big Sale Friday. Shop local and shop the small. For every, every small business is going through this Corona thing, 60% of them, national average, 60% will not recover. So local people hire, local business hire local people. Remember, spend your money local. Thank you.
That's a good thing to bring up. All right, we are adjourned.